Can I make a motion that we resume the regular meeting?
Yes, please.
Second, Mr. Duncan?
Hi.
Mr. Hopkins?
Hello.
Mr. Gregory? I, we're voting to resume the meeting. I, I'm, hi, Ms. Robertson?
Hi.
We'll just pass five to zero, we'll resume with the special.
Um, ladies and gentlemen, so as it is a welcome to speak on the gender and non-identity items. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address prior to making your comments. Please note that members of the board may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, action taken is limited to directing the administration to look into the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling for now, although the person will. And our first person is Heidi.
My name is Heidi, I live in Ajo, and I'm the Ajo's school art teacher. I came to speak about personnel, item, curriculum and instructions. And it seems last time, the board decided not to renew contract for the arts department. I know that Mr. Green has resigned, but I have not. And it seems that Arizona code stipulates inside of there that curriculum must include the arts. So, I'm, I'm hoping that I am mistaken by noticing that there is possibly not going to be arts offered next year. Because I think it's a, A, it's, it's, again, it's a violation of code, but it's also a huge disservice to poor communities. Because it, once you take away something like that, you're, you're taking away opportunities for these kids that have these, if you want them to go to college. A lot of college requirements stipulate the arts being a part of, of their education. So, how do you expect these students to compete with other, more well-funded schools? So I think that the board should probably try to come up with a way, regardless of how you feel about me personally, or regardless of the grievance that I have filed, that I still have not heard back from, from any one of the board members. Regardless of how you feel about me, you shouldn't take it out on the kids. So I sure hope that you are going to be offering arts next year to the kids, because since I have been here, I have seen some of the most amazing artwork come out of these kids. I've seen accelerated artists that, when I started here, weren't doing very well at all, and then now are thriving, and they're, and they, some of my students have begged me to stay at this school. So, I just thought I should just say a little something on their behalf, that they deserve to have a good art teacher. And if it's not going to be me, it should be somebody. So, thank you for your time.
Hi, the first. First action item is personnel, extension of the administrative contract. This item is for the purpose to approve the extension of the superintendent's contract from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. The superintendent recommends the approval of the extension of superintendent for the 21th through 22nd. Does anyone have anything to say before we vote?
Question. Is my understanding that we were voting to approve a contract, a non-specific contract? Is, is that the case? If you happen, we don't see the contract.
I think it's just a standard contract, is it not? I mean, it's what we offer.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be just the standard of one-year contract?
Yeah.
Right, with, with the contracts, there's requirements, there's a whole policy page that states requirements that the contract has to include. Things like, what services are to be rendered, financial consideration, and above description, performance responsibility, there's a whole list of things that have to include. None of us have actually seen the contract, so I, I thought that that meant that we were trying to vote to extend or not a contract, but that we would get a chance to see the contract and vote on the specific contract.
It's, it's likely we're yet to.
Sure.
My, my understanding was we were voting on the extension of the current superintendent's contract. I think if, what we can do there, I understand your point, exactly what you're saying. If we made the motion, I'm not making the motion right now, I'm just speaking out loud, but if we were to make the motion to approve an extension with a review before June 30th of the, of the, the proposed contract. Not just going off the, the one right now, but I would say we make a motion to approve with a stipulation that we will review the current contract for changes prior to June 30th.
Then if you didn't like what was in the.
Then we could review it between now and then.
Then would, that nullifies the contract that we voted on?
Well, if we're just voting on extension right now, I think we would be fine if we looked at it between now and then. And if, if we, maybe, if necessary, we could do that, I think.
I think it makes, what you're saying makes sense. I think there's a requirement that we offer the contract. I don't know what these activities, that it might be, it might be a color main. So if it, it can't be due, it would have to be more art than mine for contract.
Dr. Doolittle, is it April 1st? No, I know it was a March 31st. I know, I understand your question. Is there a certain day you, you, pending approval tonight of a one-year extension, is there a date you have to be given a contract to sign with, is, by, by statute?
For everything except a superintendent, that's December 8th, 15th, it's all night. Typically, we do, we do the same contract. Here's something that the board is going to hear. Once a vote is taken, some districts don't even get a contract issued, we've never done that. Contract, signed it or not, does not change the board's vote. So, the contract that we have was signed by board members last year, board members in the present, except for Mr. Custer. We only have to have three people sign a contract to make it, if we have a five-member board. So the contract is probably not changed, probably for about seven or eight years, is my understanding. But, the notion that I understood is going to be, there's going to be a vote to extend it.
So we, we saw a back sheet on the contract. So by voting to extend the contract, we're talking about extending that contract, we saw the back sheet.
Correct.
We're not into that?
Right. What, but I would like to see the actual contract before we vote on this. I think it's just a matter of, we build it from the board's part, and even if it, even if it is that the previous signatures apply, I still think we should see it. It's a contract that we're approving. We did get a, we got a summary, but it doesn't contain any of, the summary didn't contain any of these requirements, such as job performance responsibility, evaluating performance.
May I interrupt this for a minute, though, but the item that we're working on is to vote on, approve the extension of the regular contract.
Right.
So that's what we need to vote on right now.
Right, I'm suggesting instead.
Then you are suggesting that we table it until we see the contract?
I mean, we could do that, but I, I'm thinking that maybe instead we could do what Mr. Edmond is suggesting, and, and vote to approve or not the contract, with the understanding that we will get a chance to, to review it.
And then, what happens when you redo it, Mrs. Robinson?
Because I think then, if there was anything in here that we, that didn't satisfy policy or Arizona law, then you would have to address that. If, if, if it does, then it's fine, right, and it's approved as it, but that's what I'm suggesting, we just haven't seen it. And I think we should, as the people who are.
So my issues on all this stuff is, last time with the administrative contract and everything, why are we not looking this out before we get into this meeting?
Right.
I mean, this should have been brought up the other day.
I, I asked for a copy of the contract and it wasn't given.
Just to me, you're constantly asking us to vote for things that you bring up exceptions to all the time. I'd just like that a little more. See where I've come from? I'm not against you, Wendy, I just.
I know, I understand what you're saying, and it's, yes, and I, I have been frustrated in getting the things that I asked for too. So, I, I, and I, I think we need to be careful about what we talk about, because we, we had a, like, session. But it was my understanding during the, like, session, that.
Let's go talk about.
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to say it without, I, I, I think we, we are supposed to be able to see the contract, that, that's all. I, I thought that we, we would.
I just was wondering, is, is this word, extending the current contract for one year, as it's currently written?
It's not, it's coming.
It just, it just stinks on here, approval of this extension, superintendent recommended from 21th through 22nd. So basically, what we're going to vote on, as written, like, as it is, an extension of the current contract for one year. So, I, I, I would, I'm sorry.
I was going to sound like I'm biased. This is what is supposed to. Any agenda, if it is extending of a contract, I don't do your question, contract. To propose an extension of administrative contract, it's safe looking at, as a contract, approved, make contract. Extension of administrative contract.
Um, and all of our contracts come straight to the lawyer, it's not, we make on our own, it comes straight to the lawyer. All of our admissions, the efforts, the, the, all come to the lawyer.
So this, this contract was specifically written up by the lawyers about Doolittle? That's not the standard we can give him, this is a standard contract.
If he hasn't had the exact same contract, if he has his name and your.
So it's a standard contract?
Is it possible for us to see it now?
It's not going to tell you, ma.
Well, I know, but then we would at least see it.
I would ask the board to make a vote, one way or the other. Our two votes when we resign, then I would do it. You know, I have never been told by you to bring a contract to this meeting. We check an engine, and she sends a request for contract. You vote on the contract either yes or no, and then let it go. Then we'll deal with the contract. If we won't deal, the board will be writing the contract, we'll make sure it's legal by the attorney, they're the law. They, they represent, they keep the attorney legal. That's what I do every day.
You want to make a motion?
I will vote it this time, I make a motion for the approval of the extension for the superintendent's contract for one year.
And I have a second.
Mrs. Duncan?
Hi.
Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Cretzer, desire, Ms. Robertson?
No.
Mr. Jeffrey? I, motion passes four to one. Thank you very much.
The next honor of business is the approval of instructional model, starting March 15th, 2021. The board is being asked to study, review the existing COVID-19 health break situation in Arizona, and direct administration on a model to continue instruction in our school. Hi, Dr. Doolittle, don't you have? Yes.
The date's wrong, because we postponed this, or we tabled this last.
Oops.
Okay, okay. This is something that is, it's everywhere, even the president's talking about it. By the end of the hundred days, pardon me, as a, can't say more as a parent, as a grandparent, I worry about my granddaughter being in school. And unfortunately, the, the opening school takes on several, not unfortunately, this price, it becomes political, it shouldn't be. It's about student education, student safety. One of the board members, and I disagree on this, but we have some very, very meaningful discussions about instruction. That's what we're about. We want to keep kids healthy. One of the things we're seeing, I saw a paper with a weekend, we're seeing, graduate was a relative term, we're seeing a decline in COVID cases in Arizona. My worry is that we are still significantly above where we were in October and September. I don't want to get a false sense of security. Kids of school age are the second highest of students. And you all have an opinion, and you all probably have an opinion of theirs, but what we wanted to do is make sure every district, every district, excuse me, is a little unique. And we are unique in our geographic location. I tell my friends in Phoenix and Tucson, they're Ajo's spot in the desert. So, I don't know who we're the most like, whether we're like Pima County, or we're, we're the most like Maricopa County. It depends on whether we have a three-day weekend or not, whether people are coming through, bringing stuff from Phoenix or whatever. And some things that I asked, Mr. Edmond and I talked about, there are worries we have. We want to open, no doubt about it, we want to open, because we think that's what we believe in kids, we also want to keep kids safe. One of our worries, as I surprised said to all of you at some point in the last few months, is we don't know what the long-term effect on a student's respiratory system or their cardio system is with COVID, we just don't know. Probably because I'm not a medical doctor, probably because we hear different things from CDC, depending upon the research that's available, this thing is so novel, that it's not grounded like an older disease. So, that's my explanation, I hope I'm not wrong. But, I asked him to, please, put forward a couple things, and just want you to make aware some questions you're going to be facing, and you may hear as parents, or you may hear as community leaders, some of your worries, whichever way we vote tonight, which, whichever way you vote, I'm sorry.
I put together a few things, I can't sit down, my, my teacher's coming out of me, so.
Good thing we don't have, that's cool.
So, I put together a few slides, some information for you guys, that I hope is beneficial. This is the CDC's brand-new roadmap to reopening for schools, it's the condensed version. It broke it down into four basic categories, low transmission, moderate transmission, substantial, and high transmission. Ajo, Pima County falls into the red, high transmission area. And how they determine that, it's defined on cases per 100,000 persons in your county in the last seven days. So, you're considered low if you've had zero to nine cases. Moderate is 10 to 49 cases per 100,000. Substantial is 50 to 99, and high is more than 100 cases per 100,000 people in seven days in your county. And the, so, that's kind of where we fall, we do fall into the high transmission area, I'll show you some graphs in a little bit, I updated one of the slides today. So, in the high transmission, it says that elementary schools can still operate in a hybrid model, provided they, you have all of these other categories and, and things in place that you're doing to keep things clean, and your ventilation. Our primary campus does have the proper ventilation, our K3 buildings, because it was built in the 90s. So it does have proper ventilation over there for our K3 kids. Middle and high school classes are to be virtual only, unless they can strictly implement all the mitigation strategies, and have very few cases. Schools that are already open, which we're not, so that's, you're all, us. And then sports and extracurricular activities are virtual only.
And this seems very common, you go web and browse over the top, the CDC, well.
And if you were to go halfway down the page, on the right, there's a little box that says overview, that's, this is one of the two pages from there, the other's just a bunch of talking. So go ahead and flip the next. So, this was as of last week, when we were going to do our presentation, we had 787,268 cases in Arizona. This breaks it down by age category, less than 20, which is basically our kids' age group. 125,000 cases, basically. 20 to 44 is 345,000, and then 45 to 55 is 115, 55 to 64 is 95, and then over 65 is 105,000 cases. This is what found, most people find surprising, is that it's not this over 65 category that's the ones that are getting the virus nose. It's this 20 to 44-year-old age group is the number one, and then the number two age category is student age. So those are the two age groups that are most likely to contract COVID virus. Next slide?
You came up with Department of Health?
This is Arizona Department of Health website, I'm sorry. Once again, then, what we have down here at the bottom, this broke down by gender, which is basically 52% female, 48% male, whether or not they had chronic medical conditions prior to COVID. Only 17% of cases in the state have chronic medical conditions, chronic health conditions before COVID. 83% did not. High-risk category, so, so 65% or 65 or over, or one plus chronic medical condition, only 25% of the cases in the state were 65 or over, or had a chronic underlying health condition. State, the county, this is for Pima County. They're recommending a virtual model at this point in time. Remember I was telling you, anything over 100 cases per 100,000 people, they're recommending you're in that high category? This is where we were, this is today's most recent, they only update this on Thursdays, and they're two weeks behind. 361 cases per 100,000, that's the lowest number we've had in months and months and months. We're still three and a half times higher than the cutoff for the high. If we do vote to come back to school, these are some things that we have to figure out how we're going to address. And we've been working on them, but these are challenges for us. Morning student arrival, we have to figure out what we're going to do with kids in the morning, we can't put them all in cafeteria. We can't have them out on the playgrounds, we don't have aids here until 8:15 mostly in the morning. And then playground and recess options and restrictions, we can't put them on the playgrounds, on the playground equipment because of the sanitary issues that we are going to deal with, so, those are a couple. Buses, we kind of talked about this a little bit last week. Jose Yan looked at that for us. The largest bus will hold 13 people, but still about four and a half to five feet in spacing, separation on the buses. And we do have a shortage of bus drivers, we do have one in addition to Mr. Yan, that can work in Ajo. And then the county, they go there, doesn't have more than the two that they've allocated for us at this point in time. Yes, Mr.?
Just to add to the busing situation, and this is, this is a big deal, in my opinion. I spent some time third-hand, probably talking to Dustin Williams, giving thanks to Virginia schools, and we'd heard that in Maricopa County, pardon me, some districts are doing away with busing. Busing, schools get funded for busing, it's not mandatory to do it. It's funded by a mile, as a crow flies, elementary kids, if you're going to do it, you get funded for more than that mile. A mile and a half, I believe it's, if I recall correctly, for secondary students. So I wanted to verify what Tucson was doing, and he said he knew of no school, district or school, and Tucson was not providing busing. He said, we're putting 45 kids on a bus, he said, how are you doing the social distancing? They're not. They're basically setting the kid in their seat, so visualize, if you all live in school buses, if you have a child proceed, the kid's going to be leaning against the outside wall, perhaps talking their buddy across the aisle, or next, they're going to be about two feet, face-to-face, they're going to be about a foot and a half, two feet apart. I worry about that. I, I, I'm pleased that Mr. Edmond and Mr. Yan are looking for the six feet, because we're about kids. And I don't know how we'll get everybody, here in town, if we have to, we can do two runs. Where we'd have Mr. Yan, and we had a gentleman we hired, the boy we hired to be a sports driver, of course, he would throw four slides to the grid, he'd be good enough. And we retired, so we could run two buses if we had to, out in five acre area, to bring students in. That'd be a real challenge for.
We also talked about the issue is going to be for pickup, having parents at pickup spots, you know, are we going to require each kid to have a parent there, are we going to require one parent for those stuff, or we, but how are we going to do that? So that if a child has fever, or is displaying other symptoms, what do we do with that child? We, we can't just leave them, I mean, we're in trouble if we do that. We need to have someone there, so that's something we'd have to address, how we're going to handle that. Ventilation. With our current buildings, except for this building, and our primary campus, we simply can't meet the, I said requirements here, but that's recommendations, let's change the word to recommendations instead of requirements. And we still have a few units too, that are not working at all, whether it be heat or AC or district facilities. We're, we're working on it, we're waiting on it in the county. And this act, issue actually got worse today. Building cleaning and sanitation is difficult at best, with the limited number of cleaning staff we have, we currently have, as of this morning, we had three cleaners on staff besides Mr. Yan. I'm not positive that they're still three, or if it's two. But, that includes your day shift and your night shift. Day shift, we need people to clean bathrooms, wipe handles down, keep toilet paper filled, toilets unplugged, paper towels filled, door, door locks locked down. And at night, we need somebody to clean and sterilize to CDC standards, sanitation standards, every classroom that we have kids in, minimum. If you were to do every room on campus, I did the math for two people, it gives them about 20 minutes per room. I don't know how you sanitize everything, vacuum everything, get everything to CDC standards in 20 minutes. Including rebuilding hand sanitizer, spray bottles, paper towels that are required for every period. Yes, sir.
Comment about ventilation. For those who've been in Arizona State for a while, you're, you've heard the term school facilities board. We received a lot of money the last few years on school facilities board. School facilities board came about, about 2,000, and that's where we, we built the gym. We did the, the trench hole, they did part of this building when we had the fire, and so on and so forth. They, this past year, they resited and put new windows and doors on the elementary campus totally. So we've gotten several million dollars from them in the last couple of years. Right now, they're kind of in slowdown mode, because, pardon me, they depend, just like we do, on the legislature for money. So I contacted our liaison, and their, their, their goal is to keep, number one, keep schools safe, number two, in areas that are growing physically for more population, to ensure the students have a school. When they, when I asked them about ventilation, is that something you could fill in the grant for? I was told, take your ESSR money. ESSR money, there's been two groups of money, we'll talk about that more next month. One of them, we used 198,000 more than we received for curriculum, for computers, for face masks, for hand sanitizer, for water fountain, and so on and so forth. The last, that sort of grant was given in December, and according to the N, we have not yet done that, how much the state's even going to receive on that. So, we, I want you, I don't want you to think that we're not looking for ways to pay for this or do this, but it's very expensive, and they're saying basically, open the door. And the doors, timed. And the doors, times have changed. I still think it's a danger. We have taken movable windows out of all the buildings, almost every school that are associated with it, including off. And we have doors that are lockable, you can unlock it, walk in, you unlock to walk in. It's automatically locked when closed, if the door is working properly. And that's for student safety because there's always people coming, not always, not as much here as I saw in the city. There's people coming in camps, we want to make sure they don't have access. So by doing that, we've created a situation in the classroom wings and the gymnasium and the school office. Doesn't have the cross ventilation that the primary campus does or not was going to be. That's been there. We're still working on that, but it's going to be a challenge. We may just have to open the doors with fans, something like that if we open. But then it takes away some of the student safety. Plus in the summer or in the spring, we've had bees, twirled up bees, well rattlesnakes right outside the door of classrooms a number of times. Art room, two years ago, we must have killed six rattlesnakes within ten yards of the art room, like near the den or something like that. And I really don't want our kids to have to deal with that. It's fear of us.
We talked about this a little bit last week as well. Substitute teachers, we don't have any. We, I talked to one today that said she would like to try to do a day to see if she could get through. So we're going to give her a shot on Monday and see how that goes. And we also are picking up coverage for another teacher in the afternoons on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That being virtual have been, we've been able to take care of that because that teacher is very committed to helping our kids. And has graciously made themselves available via email and things like that, either Tuesday to Thursday afternoons. But we're trying to figure that out right now. I've been working with Stacy and Mercy on that to try and get that covered for every Tuesday and Thursday, just six and seven period. If we do bring kids back on campus. If we're on a hybrid schedule, we have to figure out what we're going to do with our special services and essential worker kids. Because we're going to have kids in those classrooms on hybrid days. This library, we put our essential worker kids in the library, primarily in the lab and out here for the older kids. Younger kids are in the lab and older kids are out here. We have classes in here, five periods a day when we bring kids back on campus. So that's a, that's an issue. And we have no, well, we do have one open classroom, but that's not going to take care of all of our essential workers plus who's going to watch them. So, yes, what's the total number we have for essentials, special services on campus? Thirty, I think it was around thirty-two today. What's our normal deal? We were full. When we're full, we're fully open, pre-COVID. What would you say to our?
Last year, four thirty, this year, three sixty, three sixty.
So we, we're going to have to figure that out. And, and we have been looking at things, but at this point in time, it's still a while. And we have to develop what our new exposure protocols are for staff that happen to be exposed after vaccine number two. We've been told now that we do not have to have them quarantine if they're exposed. After they've had their second vaccine, two weeks after they've had their second vaccine, for the first three months. After that, they have to go back to quarantine. Unless there's another booster that comes out between now and then. So I think that's, that's the end. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Real quick, so they're saying was it fourteen days after your second? And we're, I believe what the, the March first is the next round for top two.
Correct.
So we really didn't, the board approved any kind of opening, realistically, we're on fifteen.
Fifteen, however, I, I do want to point out that week is the week before spring break, which means we have classes Monday and Tuesday. And then we have conferences Wednesday, Thursday, Friday afternoon.
So it would, so basically it would be till after spring break.
That would make the most sense, I think.
We appreciate your patience listening to us talk.
We just wanted to give you all the data.
Yeah, and I haven't asked him this yet, but if we vote to open. If we vote, if you folks vote to open. What I want to do is try to address these things because you have parents in the audience right now that these things, I want your kids safe first. And I want teachers safe, staff safe. If we, if we open, I want to be able to, be able to come back to you folks for the next couple of quarters and say, this is what we did on this, this we did on that, this we did, this we did more. There's going to be options like that because this is something, I feel so, challenged on this because this is not what, not any of us were trained for at college graduate school or our experiences, it's so novel.
I'm, I'm appreciating all this, which would have to be with county. I've never asked for a state, but what banks do we have that do adjust with?
Just with our help, I know the paper has been putting out new updated statistics every week in the paper.
But that is punitive.
Correct, but you can see how many new cases we've gotten every week.
But are they for our sixth to twelve year olds?
No, they don't break it down by age group.
No, but I'd like to see that because I feel that especially for the primary grades, the danger is not there.
I, I would agree. If, if we were looking at any specific age group, I would think that kindergarten to third grade age group would be the, the group that would work because they're in the primary campus area and the ventilation is good there. And they don't move teachers except for their special teacher that they see every day. That's the only additional teacher. Four, once they get to fourth grade, they switch teachers at least once a day, at least once a day. And then they're also seeing.
There's the fourth grade, the fifth grade in the primary.
No, this is case three.
A three, a three, sorry.
There are the other side of the kids.
So what are your evaluations showing you on the kids that are having virtual learning? How are they doing as, how are we doing with the whole school system? Are the kids doing well? Are they doing mediocre? Are they doing poor? Are we going to have a big? A lot of kids are going to have to repeat their grades because of the virtual learning. What are your evaluations showing?
I will say, well, I have looked at this just recently, and that was since each time as well. It's students who are putting the amount of time in that's recommended. No, and I'm getting there for you, I'm, I promise. But yes, we have a large group at one middle school grade level that is not doing well at all. And then we have, at the high school, it's, you know, they're probably not doing as well. I know they're not doing as well as they've done in previous year. And, you know, that's for a multitude of reasons, obviously. I, yeah, I agree with you of this. Nobody thinks, nobody thinks this is the absolute best answer for kids. I want, I want everyone to know that.
Dr. Gillian mentioned yesterday that regulation rate is going to drop in the next couple of years because of this. And so, so if we brought the kid, any kind of schedule at all. Can we, can we make up? Can we bring them back up to where they should be in the amount of time that we have left in the school if we bring them in?
Or it would be, it would be a significant uphill battle to get it done by the end of May. That's not the city, it could stop the car.
One of the things that Mr. Edlund and I talked about is summer school and spring break. Last couple of years, summer school changed. Instead of being four weeks each quarter, we had two weeks previous schedule. And if I can find the month, it's got to come out, come out titled by it probably. I would like to go back to having most community high school kids for half day, four days a week. That's going to be, that's a lot of teachers who have to make the money, but I hate to go into the time. And I, and then same thing in spring, I'm sorry, in July, the A six kids, the, at least A six. One of the things that, there's no substitute in my opinion for, a live reading face-to-face teachers. If they're any good, if they're no good, it's no story. But a face-to-face teacher, they can read kids that have been trained, they can talk, they can develop an interest. They can empathize with a kid, it doesn't get much, much more personal. It's more about relationships than screen. Now, the program, a lot of district teachers, a lot of district teachers have programmed and rigorous. And that's been some of the reason that I think some of the families. But the longer kids are doing, I think the more luck, the more luck they have. One of the things I've, I've used this quote to support a hundred times probably. And I want to make sure it's not just, I would think this is happening beautifully down in Domo. L A school system last year had a hundred thousand kids, never turned in a page of work after the shutdown. Dave Miami, eighty-eight thousand. My daughter, fourth grade last year in Sporay, in the Dyers district, half the kids in her class never turned, in her grade level, never turned in a page of homework. I don't know, but so it's not unique to us. But I see some kids sitting here physically. Just as essential workers show them, I can buzz through and say hi to them and, how you doing? I'm getting, I'm doing this and doing this. And they, they don't, they don't do it. And or the task is, but they respond much better. I agree with everything Mrs. Duncan had talked about for six months. That, that's better than computers, but we still have the ability.
So. My daughter, my granddaughter Lily, she's in the fourth grade, right? So I'm asking you, if I put her back in school and she's definitely behind, I know she is. Is it worth the risk? Are you going to go to make up the rest of her year and have her ready to go to the next grade? That it's worth the risk of me putting her back in school, that I know that she could be brought up?
Do you have any grade levels that you really are, that are the most in jeopardy of not moving forward? People in third grade? Because of reading, move on one reading requirement. Eighth grade, we launched a helicopter. Because of eighth graders must pass all four course subject areas both semesters. Or be recommended by their instructor of the course subject area they didn't pass. That says they believe they're ready for high school. And then your high school students are where they're at. So realistically, your third grade students are in jeopardy of the move on one reading. But I think most of them are doing pretty well. Our eighth grade students, the students may not be doing as well because they haven't put some time in some of those. And then our high school students that are trying to get caught up. And a lot of them are this semester because of the way we've done their schedules this semester for them. Are, are making up that progress. So realistically, I think your third grade, your eighth grade are the ones that are the most at risk right now. So for those kids, it would be worth the risk to put them back in school.
That's what I'm down to, right? If they're worth the risk, as a parent or a grandparent, I wouldn't. Even if you do, your kid was going to fail, we either.
There's nothing that tells me my child has to finish when they're eighteen. That's, that's strictly a societal number that society has put out there. It says, if you just finish when they're eighteen years old. You know what? If my child finishes when they're nineteen years old and they're healthy long-term, I am just as happy, probably I'm more happy.
Is the child happy?
I, I don't know. That's a good, that's a good question, Mr.
One of the things, one of the things, we don't have, there was a question in the preview last week, or a comment, I should say, that we don't have good research on. It's not, I don't have it, I don't think Mr. Edlund has, is the emotional health of kids here in Oregon. We hear things statistically, we've heard a couple of individual cases and we've taken action. And I believe it's helped that case, individual cases, what the parents tell us. But, and the last thing we want is for a child to take drastic measures for himself. Because of the press, on their, 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 that's, that's potential downside of kids not finding that.
And, and we do have a good counselor that we're in contact with this year. And I've made a number of referrals to them and he's seen them at least weekly.
He's, I mean, he's doing, he's doing a really good job. We're very fortunate to have him. Just going off what I see at home, I have four kids. My little one's been a central worker, they come to school, my little one's been going through it all year. Yep, been great. The other three, going back. They actually get up there, ready to go to school there and enjoying it, they feel they have better help for catching up on a lot of their behind work. So I think just the fact, being in this cool environment puts them in the mindset of, I'm here to learn, I'm here to stay on task. And I understand if we decide to open in any fashion that there's parents that still be reluctant to send their kids, and I can respect that a hundred percent. But to me, from what I see of my kids, I think it's, they're more beneficial to their academics and their personal well-being that they know they can go to school. That's, that's just me, you know, I'm not speaking for the department, speaking from my point of view. And I, I think it's important we try to maintain staff safety. And we have to get them there, finish their shots out, let their food be eaten, and do what we have to do. But one thing I do want to reiterate on is, I know there's a lot of talk in the community about athletics. And I understand that completely. But we all need to understand that academics got to come before the athletics right now. And it's going to be a monumental, existential task to get kids back in school, it's so important. So I think that, I would like to ask parents to take a step back on, you know, on athletics for a little bit right now, let the school worry about academics more than anything.
You see, you see some of the daunting tasks you have before us, just to figure out how to address it.
The government made it clear, none of your money is for this. Shall we go on?
I have a, just clarification, I think this is, um, no matter what, through the end of the school year, families will have the option to do online schooling. I get that a lot, but are, are we going to have a choice?
Yes, that improved up back in junior, July, when we did this. But we have that important.
If they, if, what I would hope to see, because this has been a financial disaster for the district. What I would hope to see is that if parents have withdrawn and put their child in a different online program, we know a lot of Domo students. I would hope that they would, we could say that, sign up regardless of the kind of discipline they're under. These won't help us this year, the gentleman this year is going to determine, I mean, it may help us establish some more positive A D M after twenty-one, twenty-two.
Got to do twenty-one, twenty-two. We will not be using that same program.
Right now, we're a quarter million dollars in the hole. We got to make a quarter million dollars in tax.
No, I meant the.
Well, if you know anything. No, no, I'm sorry, correct. And last, we have crisis again in September.
But we have, we'd come back to a.
A regular construction. I hope, I hope, that's the other thing I am, that, I think school starts August sixth, something like that. I hope that by then this thing has died down with, whether, you know, there's enough vaccinations out there or people are, are comfortable wearing the mask or whatever. That next year can be more of a normal year. I hope, of course, I thought that, I thought that last March, you made it to it as well.
Okay, so tonight, or who's going to be going on to? Opening with a hybrid, not opening, or the other?
Why don't we start with the number one, continuing with an online instructional program? That means not reopening at all.
Oh, good. Okay, just, just be clear real quick. So we're going to hold number one.
So we're going to hold number one, or just the online only, correct?
Yeah.
And then we'll move on to the next one, and then enough for the. Oh, I'll second. Okay, well, number one, we're just an own, online-only instructional program at this point? Mrs. Duncan?
No.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis is no. Mrs. Robertson?
I have a question. Is this open per review in a month, or are we deciding till the end of the year?
I would like to see it future of the year. I don't think we want to continue to drag this out. Only every month.
No.
Uh, Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Number one does not pass, one yes, four no's.
Number two is open the school on a hybrid model. Earlier than February twenty-second, and I think we need to change that date.
And would this be for all students, or primary only, or?
Something like that, probably.
And I, I would like to actually have the number three option out there before we get to it. So y'all kind of have an idea?
Okay.
Is it okay if I throw something out for that real quick? My thoughts for number three is, we do a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in-class schedule. Wednesdays are half-days. You know, the teachers have their day, they get stuff done, no students a day, and it's an extra day for cleaning, inspecting. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with the online option still available to be for parents. Do you propose to, all students here at the same time, or is that? Correct, correct.
All students.
So it would be a four-day school week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with the online option available, parents that still want to use online. But that would be my recommendation for number three.
And we should vote at number three, then.
What? A vote.
That's okay. So should we, should we clarify number two as well? Because that, that they, we mentioned that date would probably change.
It's starting after spring break.
Yeah. It would be March twenty-ninth would be the one.
Can I, can I ask, is that, with all of these challenges? Is that at all reasonable?
You know what? With our current, I'll tell you, with our current stocking issues with this studio. I mean, and we're trying. I mean, we've posted, we're, yeah, but we're probably two to three people short at least.
Is that twice where the board's hired someone, and they took another job before? Because, do the EVA verify?
There are, there are things we're going to have to figure out. And I don't know if it matters what date we put on this. These, these are going to be challenges that we're just going to have, we're just going to have to figure out.
We were talking earlier, I'm really the same, as possible. If the children themselves can do a lot, it's in their class. It's been done in schools before, Japan, the children, you all know.
I think we're going to have to, with students changing, especially secondary, with a changer, it's going to take away instructional time, we've talked about.
Yeah.
And having the teacher handle the spray bottle, the kids wipe down their desk, so and so.
So on the way out. And. I'm sorry. So your thing, um, as for changing classrooms, I, I really can't see, even the having to change classrooms, they're going to be continuing to do the year anyway. So I don't think I have to worry about the upper grades having to switch classes. I think the important thing is they have some type of, some form of, here's available data, question. I know our teacher has their specialty, but, um, I, I, I don't see it with the next classroom. That's going to significantly impact how teachers are working with kids as far as being able to make their presentations. If they're all staying, let's say, we have seventeen math kids in one classroom, uh, let's, let's use proper numbers. We have eleven math kids in one classroom, and three, uh, English kids in one classroom. But the eleven math kids are doing different math. You're going to have all these different lectures going on. Teacher's going to be in the front, doing their lecture to a computer, or in front of a board. I don't know, I think it's going to be very challenging if we can, if we do it that way. Because kids are going to be trying to hear their teachers. But, I think you have a teacher in the room that's doing their thing. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to trying to figure it out, but once again, it's another, just. We had a lot of challenging times last year. Yes, so. Yes, it's another, it's another thing that they have, that we all have to have.
Eric, can I ask you a question? But your option number three again, um, that also, you're proposing would start March twenty-nine?
Um, yes, after spring break, yeah. So then I think the, the district's going to do a lot of, some time to, to figure out if that was the option.
So, so my, my huge concern is, aside from, you know, either of these bringing kids on campus options really was a lot of. My biggest concern with option number three is that it's, it's like, it's nowhere near any of the CDC recommendations. We're in high transmission, um, for particularly middle school and high school. They're recommending virtual only, unless they start, medical litigation standards can be implemented. That's for hybrid. I think you're proposing bringing everyone in, which makes the distancing not possible. If we're just, we're not even, we're not even on, on the chart with.
I'm sorry, I have a BLS truck with a dying patient, and I've been trying to get a vote so I can vote, but I can't any longer.
Can we call you?
Thank you. Yeah, you can call me.
With the vote?
Yeah.
I, I once again, um, object to being counted in, um, like, a hundred thousand. We're talking about, how many, how much danger is there here?
We have a significant number of cases. I don't know about the age, ages.
See, that's what I want to know, the age.
They've told us not to look at our local area, they've told us to look at our county.
I think that's wrong. Because we're not, we're miles away from where the, the real problem is in Tucson.
One thousand cases per day, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
One thousand cases out of three thousand per day.
One hundred.
It's one hundred.
One hundred.
It's seven, it's.
So here, we have, the estimate that we're putting forward is four thousand people. It's, I mean, four or less, less than four point four per day. And what I see on the website, probably, is not often, I mean, that much.
Yeah, so I have, also, our, our zip code data, our local data. It does tend to mirror the county data.
But not for children. Now, we're talking about children. And that's what the CDC will tell you, that the, if it doesn't pass and affect, the children do not get the disease that much easier.
So, yes, and we use CDC guidelines to guide your account. That's why they're recommending, um, hybrid learning for the younger kids, regardless, especially in guard, at a transmission level. So, so I think that, that's true. You understand what we're considering, CDC seems to be angry about you.
Good, for the younger kids.
For the younger kids, only, only the elementary age.
But you're, you're telling me through class, oh, I presume through garden, the third. I, I would prefer to have, like, to sixth grade or something.
I can tell you right now, this, the fourth, fifth, and sixth are in, they're in a wind that doesn't have proper ventilation. Matter of fact, at least, at least one of those classrooms doesn't have any wind.
But since, if you do not use the, um, high school room for students for the rest of the year, which I think a lot of parents would be upset with that. But, um, cannot reuse those rooms that do have ventilation for some more.
Yes, we can reposition, but that, once again, that's if we're not going to have high school. But we're, I don't think any of the options that are out there right now are just for elementary students.
No, this was, Eric's is for all students.
Yeah, my, my, the third option microphone would be for cable. Now. Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I would love to see other options we can take, and vote on as they go down, that's fine. Um, that's, that was an iron finish on that.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, okay, on number two, real quick, on the hybrid model. Would that be like we discussed before, Monday, Tuesday, there, Monday, Thursday, would? Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday would be a tutoring and assistance. So basically, you would have half the students here?
Yes.
Okay. To keep social distancing. Okay. Um, how would that affect the essentials? Will they still have the option to be in the way? What?
Essentials have the right to be here. Some people are asking about special education students. But my, my experience with special education students, as long as the IP is met, as long as, if they need to have X number of hours during the week, uh, and they have those hours in two days, I think we perhaps, I'm going to write a program there in two days. Depends on, depends on the individual child's need and the IP. Essential work, kids regardless of who our schedule is, the parents still need someone to look after the children, and that's what that's about.
And then the other process I have is, I've been following pretty closely, is that Catholic schools and private schools and that, um, they are open all the way through high school. And have had very, very few problems. My school that I was working with in, in Colorado has been open since Christmas. And it's, they just haven't had any places. And that, and I, and that was of mine. But if you look at the whole picture, and some of these Catholic schools, like places like Chicago, that are loaded.
I, I mean, I, I completely understand. I look at Gilveston right up the road. They've tried to open and close, they've been open and closed by different kinds of. So those are.
I don't think that they even have practice schools that, if you were, if everyone has a shot, I started the adults and the teachers, they send those children home. They don't, anymore than like with the flu, that it doesn't, the other kids are not as active.
Well, if they're exposed to the health, if they're exposed to.
Well, that's what we said. Oh, I don't know, I don't, I mean, I, the child has to be.
Yeah. If there's a breakout in a classroom, or there's a breakout, one of the things Mr. Edman didn't talk about, what? If we have one math teacher in high school, and that, that teacher is exposed, and we don't substitute, we got to.
But if they have the, the shot.
We should be good to rest this year, correct?
It would take us, oh, to.
Yes, yes. Yeah, you're exactly right.
And we wouldn't have to have that problem.
You're right.
Um, but you, 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 you bring up a good point, that, um, with the closings, we can open. But with transmission levels, the way they are in the community right now, our, we, we ran, or from the health department came and told us what the criteria were, or, or, when they would ask us to close. And it wouldn't take a long.
I want to put you on speaker.
For them to close us down after that. It would take, it would take maybe four weeks, because that's their window of looking at it.
I got Lonnie on speaker.
But the levels are pretty high right now, so probably, uh, likely would have us being closed, but the health department, pretty high.
Not all staff received the shot.
Correct, eight percent of our staff certified and classified received the shot, roughly eight percent.
But there's still about ten percent who have not received that.
And we did, I mean, you have to report, an outbreak is considered, two cases in less than two weeks at your school is considered an outbreak. And we have to report every time that happens to the health department. And that's became a new thing for us recently, that we went down that path to do that. And we have had to make the report recently. I'd like to pull this out there for option two. Do you have to vote on option two? And then, just as long as the administration, we can keep looking, see how the numbers lie according to CDC, and keep the option, open a full school open with the hybrid, provided that the numbers meet up? Or should we just leave it alone as a default standpoint?
Can I, I think, I would love to see sort of what you're saying, um, suggesting a, a fourth option, which would be, um, open starting March twenty-ninth, following the CDC guidelines. So, early grades, um, and possibly upper grades, depending on what our current situation is.
I, I get confused with CDC, because they have the guidelines, and they have all these guidelines. Yet when they have, the head of the CDC is on TV or something, it's imperative that we open school and that he gives that. Now, that, that doesn't quite go together.
I understand what you're saying. I feel the same way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't get it.
Well, they're also saying, we want to get kids back in school, and we want to have them back in school within the first hundred days of this administration. That means at least one day a week.
That's ridiculous.
Right, I mean, that's, so, that, I mean, right now, six, you know, sixty-five percent of the kids in the country are going one day a week per month. So, so with the hybrid program, you guys are thinking of it being just one day a week? No. No, we're thinking two days a week.
Two days.
Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday, and then Wednesday is, uh, virtual, remote. Is it possible that we can do it where the kids, they're going one year, one year, they get these both two things in a row? The reason that they don't recommend that is because if a student shows up and is displaying symptoms sometime that day, on Monday, let's say. They end up getting a fever, they have to be sent home, or they have other symptoms, they're not supposed to return to school for three days after that. And that's why we went with the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, so we could fall into that, so we could be.
But if I set up the online option.
Except for if we're trying to give them that in-person learning, which is our main goal here. We're trying to give them every opportunity to get the most in-person days that we, that they can get. That's why we went with that.
An easy decision you guys have.
So, I just want to clarify Wendy, what we're talking about.
Are we saying this? I think we're.
What you, what you were saying, so if we start hybrid, and it's for twenty-ninth? It would, if we said yes for it, then it would only go into effect if we met the CDC numbers, or?
That's, no.
I just, I just want to clarify Wendy was saying earlier.
That's what I'm suggesting, but, but if you look at it, they're, they're actually pretty flexible, so we, we would have to be looking at that. Given our specific situation. So it says middle school and high school virtual unless we can fulfill the mitigation strategy. So it's not saying you can't go hybrid, it's saying you can't, it's, it's, you can do a big.
So should we have a vote on number two as it sits? Or, and then, and that is like a fourth?
So we're going to have number two just to be, kind of, open school on a hybrid model on, on March twenty-ninth? For all students.
On a hybrid, yeah, on a, on a hybrid, yes. So, if that's the case, I'll go ahead and make the motion for number two?
A second.
One second. Okay, so for number two, Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Curtis, yes? Mrs. Robertson?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Well, number two has board approval for opening school on a hybrid model. Do we want to go ahead and vote on the other ones as, that they, so, that need, if, if they can be implemented at the administration's, um?
What I'm worried about is if, if one of the others passed a conflict. What I'm worried about is if one of the others passed a conflict with number two, you're gonna wanna know what you voted for.
And I'm fine with just stopping right there.
Yes.
Here's what we'll tell you, um, I'll communicate with the board every Friday if it must, I'm. Um, but if we, if this happens, let's pretend, and we have a lot of, if, if what we just, what the board just approved, if we have a lot of students that come down with something, we're gonna, I'm gonna advise you, but we may, we, we need to shut it down quickly, so we may not have time to point for our board. We will not keep the board in the dark. We don't, we don't purpose stress and keep it a secret. We want to communicate with families, we want to keep, we want to give the board a chance.
Yeah, Chris, so can you tell them, do you have any information, do you have any?
Um, I'll give you a call soon if I'm out here.
Okay.
Yeah, so here, more than just. Okay, well, and, um.
So, clarify on that real quick then, so what I said, the bits will be online, no in-person.
Correct, even if second, we're expecting it, we'll not have campus those, those days, because we anticipate there will be a number of staff that will assume the side of that, some of that.
Appreciate getting it.
Yeah, we're thrilled, we're thrilled that we're getting it that day, but.
And I appreciate the discussion seriously, on five of you, because this is nice. The, the goal of five of you, I appreciate, because you're all wanting to think kid, and that's the business plan. And it's just how we're gonna go about it, so it's the discussion.
There's a little bit of a glimpse into every day, every day of the building level right now, so, so.
I had a superintendent in Tucson tell me last spring, opening loading a school is strictly an operational procedure, it's not a board issue. Well, that may be true, but I sure like to hear what you folks have to say, so I appreciate it.
No, any, no other business? We will, Jared, and.